Good evening, Ms. Scales-Harris has our prayer and pledge. Ms. Harris?
May we bow? Dear heavenly Father, we come to you this evening just to say thank you, Lord. We thank you for blessing us to see this another day that wasn't promised to us, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity that you have given each and every one of us on this council to serve our community. And, Lord, we ask that you move in our midst as we make decisions about our economy. We ask that you move in our midst that we improve relationships and that we improve the quality of life for all of our citizens. And, Lord, we ask a special prayer for those that have lost jobs and lost homes and that have lost hope, Lord, and may they learn to trust and depend on you. And at this time, we ask for a moment of solemn prayer for these citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I would like to give the flag of the United States of America and do three more for which it stands, one nation, one God, and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, July 15, 2010. Council members, you have before you the consent agenda. If there are any questions regarding the consent agenda, now is an excellent time to bring those up, otherwise I'll accept a motion that we accept our consent agenda. Motion, second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You also have the minutes of the meetings that have been prepared for you. Those meetings were on June 17, 2010, June 24, 2010, July 1, 2010. If you've had an opportunity to review those minutes as they are presented, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes?
Mayor, if there's no changes, I move we approve the minutes as presented.
All right. You have a motion, and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll conduct a public hearing and consider for approval a certificate of compliance for Kevin McKimmy and Robinne Anne McKimmy at City Limits Liquors, 5353, Northwest Broad. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against this certificate of compliance? Is anyone here? If no one is here wishing to speak, then I'll close the public hearing at this time. Do we need a motion then on the certificate of compliance?
No move. It will be approved. Second.
Motion, and second, to approve this certificate of compliance. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You have your certificate. You're free to go, free to stay, whatever you please. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on June 10, 2010, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately 4.4 acres along Greenland Drive and North University Street, Area 4, from Medical Residential CMR District to General Office Residential OGR District. City of Murfreesboro Planning Staff is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the June 27, 2010, issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ely, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, good evening, City Council members. The first, or the first planning public hearing this evening is to consider rezoning approximately, or eight parcels for approximately 4.4 acres located along North University Street to south of Greenland Drive, from CMR, Medical Commercial Residential District, to OGR, General Office Residential District. Last month, I promised that there would be a couple more changes that would be coming before you resulting from the study initiative that Planning Staff held regarding the medical zones surrounding the existing Middle Tennessee Medical Center campus. This is one of those items that I promised you last month. We have referred to this area as Area 4, and it consists mostly or exclusively of office buildings. None of this property is owned by the Medical, MTMC, or NHC. Staff did reach out to NHC since they are a large property owner in the area, and they have no plans to make any changes to their property, so we've just left the property that they own alone. And the properties that you see there are some medical offices buildings. They're just south of property zoned RS 10, and that's the location of a cemetery. And the surrounding zones on the eastern, western, and southern sides are all zoned CMR. The Planning Commission did recommend that this area be rezoned from CMR to OGR unanimously. There were five members present that evening. If you have any questions about this request, I'd be glad to answer them either before or for the public hearing.
Any questions for Ms. Ely before we open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning change, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against this zoning request? All right, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area along Greenland Drive and North University Street, Area 4, to General Office Residential OGR District.
Move for passage on first reading. Second.
Motion, and second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on June 10, 2010, we'll now conduct a public hearing to consider annexation of approximately 12.92 acres located north of Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway, and to adopt for same a plan of services. Storage House Development Company and the Planning Staff are the applicants. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the June 27, 2010, issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely.
Thank you again, and, Council members, this next item is to consider adopting a plan of services for an area to possibly be annexed. The area is approximately 12.92 acres. It includes six parcels for which the property owner has requested annexation, one parcel which the Planning Commission included as additional study area, and 381 linear feet of Veterans Parkway right-of-way. As you know, it's the city's policy to not completely surround an unincorporated area with incorporated, with city limits. So, the map, or the parcel that shaded blue was not requested by the property owner, however, Planning Commission did include that as additional study area. Planning Staff has had conversations with the property owner, and he's in favor of being annexed, he's not opposed to it, but I did just want to point out to you that that was the action Planning Commission took. This property, or this study area is contiguous with current city limits along the southern property lines and along the western property lines. It's located on the northeastern corner of Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road or Highway 96. As you well know, Veterans Parkway, this portion of Veterans Parkway has recently been improved by T-Dot, and we're currently working on the southern portion, currently known as Moreland Lane, improving that to a five-lane street. The study area will be able to receive city services according to the plan of services, all in a timely manner. Murfreesboro Electric Department will be providing electric service to the study area. Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department will be able to immediately provide sewer to the requested area, and once that area develops, sewer will be available to the additional study area. The Planning Commission did recommend annexation and adoption of a plan of services for this area unanimously. There were five members present that evening. If you have any questions regarding the plan of services or any other item, I'd be glad to answer them before or after the public hearing. There isn't a representative of the applicant here this evening to get any questions from him or his representative.
All right. Are there any questions from Ms. Ely before we open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the annexation, that's an annexation request, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Kevin Gunther with Design Resource. I'm working in conjunction with Huddleson Steel, representing Storage House Development. I will reserve most of my commentary regarding this site for the zoning portion, but we are asking for this annexation and the plan of services in relation to that request, and we believe that the site is well-suited, the surrounding infrastructure and the surrounding zoning, we believe would support extending this site into the plan of services of the city.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this annexation request? Anyone at all? Last chance. If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to annex an area located north of Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway and to adopt for the same a plan of services. Mayor?
I was just going to ask the question, Ms. Ely. It's not, not that it's not, it's a city policy to not surround, but it's more of a state law that we can't encircle without annexing.
It would be better said had I said that.
Okay. I just want to make that, not to correct you, but that's more of a state, state issue.
And plus, let me, let me let the public know that this area is in the urban growth boundary. It also is within the MTMC-MED boundary, so it's kind of, you know, it is what it is, you know, it's going to happen. I move for approval.
Second. Okay, you have a motion, and second, to annex this area. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on June 10, 2010, we'll now conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to zone approximately 12.92 acres located north of Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway as Highway Commercial District simultaneous with annexation. Storage House Development Company is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the June 27, 2010, issue of the local newspaper. Please continue, Ms. Ely.
Thank you, Mayor. This rezoning request is for the property that we just considered annexation before in the previous agenda item. It's 12.92 acres, and it's located north of Franklin Road and Highway 96, just east of Veterans Parkway. The property is currently zoned R-15 in the Rutherford County, and the request by the property owners is to zone it CH simultaneous with the annexation of the properties. There are seven parcels total, six of them are vacant, and one has a single-family house. The parcel with the single-family house is the one located directly on the corner of Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road, and that is the area that was included as additional study area. The applicant is the owner of the six surrounding parcels, and the applicant has requested the CH zoning. The owner of the additional study area also is in favor of having his property zoned CH, so the Planning Commission's recommendation will state such. The properties to the south are zoned, or will be zoned fairly soon CF, Commercial Fringe District. The properties just across Veterans Parkway are also zoned CF. This area, the Planning Commission recommended a CH zoning for because it's a larger area, it's at least three times the size of the parcel to the south and the parcel to the west, so there's a greater opportunity to do a good development because these parcels will be combined and developed as one development. So, Planning Commission thought it would be appropriate to go ahead and zone that CH rather than that CF district. The recommendation to zone it CH was simultaneous or was unanimous, and all five members of the Planning Commission voted for that that evening. If you have any questions about the rezoning request, I'll be glad to answer them, and Mr. Gunther is here this evening representing the applicant, and I think that, do you have anything to say at this time? I think if you'd like to entertain him, he'd like to come up and talk about it, the request, before the public hearing or after, whenever you feel.
Before would be fine.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and Council members. I just want to highlight some things about this property that we feel warrants the CH rezoning request. One of those things, as Ms. Ely had pointed out, was the size of the parcel. We do have 11 acres, and the CH zoning would allow for the large size of that parcel to fit the types of things that CH would support. What I mean by that is we, we have enough room to do a good site plan, we have enough room to get proper access into the site, provide the amount of space we need for buffers for surrounding property. We have the amount of room that's needed to do a good job designing it, so we would like the flexibility to do that. The other thing is that the city has invested in this area, the city has invested infrastructure in this area, and we're advocating that that infrastructure would also be well-suited for CH zoning and give the city a return on its investment into the area. And we believe that the infrastructure that's out there would support some uses, for example, a hotel may be a possibility at some time in the future, a garden center, drive-in restaurant, those types of things that would work on a CH property only if you have a good intersection node like, like we have here, in addition to the size of the parcel. I also want to point out that the Blackman Plan does call for a commercial node at this location with a mixture of uses, so we feel like we are fitting in with the long-range plan of the city on this parcel. And, of course, I'll be here to answer any questions, as well as Mr. Elliott, the applicant, if you have any. Thank you.
Any questions before I open the public hearing?
Mayor, I've got a comment.
Mr. Young?
When is it the best time, now or after?
After, good. Thank you. I had one too.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposed amendment to zone approximately 12.92 acres located north of Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway as Highway Commercial, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to zone an area located north of Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway as Highway Commercial CH District. I have a question, and Mr. Young, I think you did too. You go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, one of the things that the Planning Commission felt comfortable about with this is it is a large enough parcel to do something with. Sometimes you can get a commercial highway area that's not large enough to really put a good development on, and this is large enough to put a good development on and buffer it, border it, and have entrances and exits into the parcel well, a well, well-laid-out development. And two, approximately 10 years ago, the Blackman Landing Study called this a commercial node, which justifies commercial highway. So, this is not something that was thought of last week, it's been on a study for 10 years.
Ms. Ely, I had a question about why we're giving a bulk zoning as opposed to PUD or PCD or one of the other acronyms we use.
Sure. To zone the property, plan development, the applicant would have to have a specific plan for the property, and it couldn't be just a general plan listing uses and just saying that it's going to be a nice development, but they actually have to have very specific development plans for the property. At this time, there's no specific plans for how it'll be developed in the future, they just know that the location and of the property would be a good location for a commercial area. And actually, staff wouldn't accept an application that was vague and that didn't, that wasn't very specific about the future development plans, so their only option would be to seek a bulk zoning.
What options do the planning staff have in the future when this applicant, certainly who is worthy of any zoning that we can plant, but to make sure that we know it will be of the, to fit into the neighborhood, it will look good, it won't have the gateway overlay on top of it or anything like that? That's, I think, one of the things that we've always been concerned about, obviously with commercial development. We're, we're kind of looking for commercial development now. For many years, we, we were a little more suspicious, I guess. So, that's the question, and why, what safeguards do we have as to type of development, and how can we control it when the time comes that they do have a more specific plan?
The Planning Commission felt more comfortable zoning the property CH because within the past year, we've adopted some amendments to our site plan review process, and our standards have been changed just a little, or to be a little bit closer to the gateway. It's not, there's not an opportunity to review the project twice, but at the site plan phase, there's required requirements for landscaping and the lighting, and so we've adopted more policies that when we do review the site plan, it's going to have to be a higher-quality development than it was three years ago under just the CH zone.
So, we have the ability to do that, and I call it a safeguard, it's just so that we can keep up with what the property is going to be utilized for and how it's going to look.
It does, the guidelines do require a higher development. It doesn't give any building exterior material specifications, but staff does review buildings when they're submitted to us, and we require them to submit what they do plan to put on the exterior of the building, and staff has the ability to review that and make comments. And so, we do make comments at that time, but we didn't adopt the design guidelines that we studied in the past, but we've noted, or you can see in other areas of our community, the willingness on the part of developers to do a nicer development, and also, we require review of those exterior, exterior elevations.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to just kind of piggyback on what you're saying. I think we, the parcel that's to the, across the road to the, I guess it would be the west, northwest corner, that's on commercial highway as well, is that correct?
It's CF.
CF.
Fringe.
But it's, it's, the same applies to that as applies to this. We really don't have any, we've zoned it Commercial Fringe, and they have just the basic guidelines.
Ms. Wright.
Because at one time, it didn't come before us as a plan development, and we kind of had to back up and redo that particular corner, is that correct?
That's absolutely right. We actually did zone the property PCD, Plan Commercial District, but then realized that that vague plan just didn't meet the standards in their zoning ordinance, so I guess City Council said that CF zone would be appropriate for that, those four acres.
I can understand, Mayor, I have some of the same feelings you do, and I trust this would be a good development, and I think it will, and I have a lot of confidence in staff. But a lot of times, I think us at the council level want to have some assurance that what we're doing is going to be something that the community will be proud of, so, I mean, we have that, we have that balancing act, Mayor, and I guess we have to, you know, I know we've kind of worked a lot of blanket zoning here recently, commercial highways and things that we haven't done in the past. We seem like we, we used to do it years ago when I was on the council, then we got away from it, started doing a lot of plan developments, and now we're back to some blanket zoning. And it hasn't hurt us, but it does give us a little bit of uncomfortable feeling when we do that. We don't have as much authority, and we feel that staff could do a good job, we just want to make sure that we don't get caught doing something that, Mr. McFarland's got a question, Mayor?
Mr. McFarland.
The, I think the rationale that we've talked about in a couple of different instances that if someone's coming in and they don't have a plan yet, the expense for someone to go through the process of a plan development, especially in the climate that we're in right now, is almost prohibitive to be able to let people know that, you know, Murfreesboro is open for business. And I think that we went through with our design guidelines, and then we've also, on the blanket zonings that we've looked at, base plannings for our landscaping, you know, some of the things that we traditionally were not able to do under our blanket zoning, and we now have that opportunity to be able to review that. Is that correct?
That's right. Well, Planning Commission has that opportunity.
Right. What would happen if, under a blanket zoning, that staff was making some, some strong recommendations, say that they did not like what the developer was proposing, and that was not consistent with what the area is, although it's a CH zone? What would happen if the developer said, "Look, I've got a CH blanket zoning, I don't care whether you like it or not, I'm going through and I'm doing it anyway"?
Well, also, ultimately, that site plan approval is up to the Planning Commission, so even if staff, staff can make some recommendations to the Planning Commission, and it would be up to them on if they approve it or they don't approve it.
I guess what the question is, this may be from Ms. McGann, and where does our legal right end with a blanket zoning on what, what we can and cannot tell that applicant?
If they meet the site plan standards that we have as part of our zoning ordinance, they would be entitled to get approval, but if they don't, we're entitled to reject it. Whether our rejection was appropriate or inappropriate would have to be decided by a court, but it does have to be a sufficiently clear standard that it can be enforced and it can be complied with by applicants.
One of the.
Mr. Young?
I was going to say, one of the, the good thing about what we've done by upgrading our design guidelines is we have put specifics in about landscaping and light spillage and things like that, that are very legitimate questions. So, the Planning Commission has a strong, ordinance is not the term, is that the term?
It is, it is part of our.
To back it up, so the Planning Commission could stop it in its tracks, so to speak. If that's correct.
If, if there was a failure to meet a clear standard, one of the things that the staff and Planning Commission and City Council will, I'm sure, be considering at some point in the future is whether or not to exercise the authority that the state legislature has granted cities to engage in design review on a broad basis. That's not something which staff has felt the need to bring to the council or Planning Commission to this date, but that would be where additional power to regulate the appearance would come from. I think staff and the Planning Commission, the council have gone as far as we can under the existing ability to regulate bulk zoning classifications through site design standards. The next step would be to go through a formal design review, power adoption and implementation, and we haven't done that yet.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to just make another comment. I know that Mr. McFarland touched on it earlier about the economic conditions that we're living in today, and I know we all want to encourage and be pro-business, and we encourage everyone to, actually, you know, the majority of our budget's based on our sales tax revenue, and that's, and we need to be pro-business when our, our funding is basically based on sales tax revenue. We want to encourage businesses and not only new ones, but the existing businesses we have in our community today to be successful and to prosper, so, you know, it's a two-head sword, you want to make sure that you're not hindering people that want to come in and do commercial developments, but you also want to make sure that the community gets a product that they will be proud of at the same time.
I feel certain this developer will do that, it's not a problem. I think this is going to be a commercial property, I just have a little problem granting the bulk zoning. That's just basically my only objection.
Mayor, I had mentioned, just briefly, and I think I had mentioned, there are some communities and cities, you know, the places who have a, have a zone, it's called a plan commercial zoning. In other words, you can go ahead, if you have a parcel that's like this, that you would like to see a plan on, the owner or the developer would like to have it zoned commercial, it could be zoned, a planned commercial. I think, I think you could do that, I've seen in other communities where, okay, yes, you do have your zoning, you do have a commercial zoning, but you don't know what's going there at this point, but when something does come along, you'll have to follow under the plan guidelines. I don't know if that's an option or not.
I would, three years ago or four years ago, when we, you know, we were predominantly just doing all plan developments, and we did not have any really guidelines within our bulk zoning in place. I mean, we had guidelines, but, you know, we were going through some different issues. When, when I was on the Planning Commission, we were talking about roof pitches, and we were talking about metal structures and different things, and I think the Planning Commission, the staff, and the council has worked hard over the last three or four years to be able to tighten up those design guidelines that we have, you know, we went through a whole process on that. So, you know, I feel more comfortable voting for a bulk zoning now because we do have some teeth that we have in our zoning ordinance, is to say, if you do have a commercial highway zoning, this is what we expect. We expect base plannings, we expect landscaping plans that have to be approved by the Planning Commission, we have some building materials, we have some different things that we are requiring on the site plan approval that, you know, I, I think that it's just, it's just hard on the plan development to ask someone on the front end right now to be able to, when there's no idea what's going, what's going to go there, so.
All right, we have this ordinance on first reading to zone. This is Highway Commercial. Any other comments or questions regarding this ordinance? Then is there a motion that we accept this ordinance?
Mayor, I move we accept the recommendation.
All right.
Second.
All right, you have a motion, and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Good luck in the years.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
I vote no. You do have, on first reading, this zoning. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer with regards to bids for construction of Haynes Drive improvements. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and members of the City Council. I have for you tonight a contract for construction of improvements to Haynes Drive. Six bids were received on June 29th of this year for improvements to Haynes Drive from Sulfur Springs to Regency Park Drive. The construction includes the improvements to back-to-back horizontal curves and the extension of the existing turn lane that's at Sulfur Springs, that's at Sulfur Springs Road. In addition, the Murphysboro Water and Sewer Department is replacing their facilities in this construction area also. We've included a copy of a, of a site map that's indicating the location of the project for your review. The low total bid in the amount of $358,587 was submitted by Rollins Excavating of Murphysboro, Tennessee. Our estimate for the project was $400,000. Rollins has completed numerous similar projects for the city and is currently our annual stormwater and concrete contractor. Staff and our consultant, Hudson Steel, have reviewed their qualifications and subcontractors they have submitted to use and are satisfied they are completing this project within the specified contract time. Hudson Steel has provided corrected bids tabulation and a letter of recommendation. We recommend award of the contract to Rollins Excavating, subject to review and approval of the agreement by the city attorney with funding to be from, to be reimbursed from future borrowings. I might mention also that the utility work will be, the cost for that will be picked up by, by the respective utility companies.
What, is that the $28,800 figure?
Yes, sir. It is.
There's some electrical work, some sanitary sewer and water lines, and roadway.
Exactly. The $28,800 is for the sanitary sewer and the water, and then the almost $15,000 is some electrical work that MED will be completing.
So they'll be paying for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this will go from Memorial all the way to Wilkes-Barre? Is that correct? The repaving?
The, the repaving will. We'll complete this, this reconstruction project between Regency and Sulfur Springs. That's a, is scheduled to be a 90-day project. We'll start that towards the mid, towards the end of August. I want to be able to give schools a chance to get back in session and kind of normalize that traffic flow before we disrupt everything. A 90-day construction schedule will basically put us into November, and I've talked with the street department, and they're on board to come in and resurface the entire project once we're completed with ours.
So we should be able to get it done before the plant's closed on?
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions for the city engineer regarding this recommendation? If not, is there a motion to accept? Some leave.
Seven.
Motion, second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We have the implementation of our defined contribution retirement plan, which began July the 1st. And so I believe the city attorney has a few things to talk about, and I will turn that over to you at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. In order to implement the decisions that the council has previously made and the recommendations of the pension committee and your staff, it will be necessary to adopt three resolutions. Before I talk about each of those resolutions and what they do, I want to briefly recap what we're doing and why we're doing it. As you know, we've had a defined benefit pension plan, and we're making a change for employees hired on or after July 1st of this year to a defined, did I say defined contribution? I meant to say defined benefit. Okay. Okay, I had it right. Defined contribution retirement plan, and we, staff has decided we want to talk about the current pension plan and the upcoming retirement plan, so it will be clear in everybody's mind their differences. And I want to stress, as we have shared with our employees and the department head, that this new retirement plan will have absolutely no impact or relationship to current employees and their existing defined benefit pension plan. The plan designed based on recommendations, options from the actuaries studied by the pension committee, considered by the council, calls for mandatory 3% contribution by the city as employer and each employee. That will go into the 401A plan. In addition, employees have a voluntary option of contributing from 1% to 5% of their earnings to a 457 plan, a deferred compensation plan. If an employee does that, then the city will match an equal percentage from 1% to 5% and put that amount in that would also be available for the employee's retirement. So if an employee chooses to contribute the maximum amount, which would be 3% mandatory and 5% voluntary, the city will match that. So 16% of an employee's earnings would be set aside each year for their retirement. The plan design has the same eligibility. Three full months after the first month of hire before they're eligible to participate. It has the same vesting at five years, and it has the same definition of earnings as in the current pension plan. What this new system does is cap the city's maximum liability exposure for the retirement benefit for its employees and shift the responsibility and options and choices for investment decisions from the city to the individual employees. The fee for this service is drawn from the accounts held by the employees. ICMA RC, who was the provider selected through a competitive process, had a very low cost to employees, and that's also beneficial. They are a nonprofit entity totally dedicated to providing this kind of service for government employees. They're specialized, and they have a long and successful record. Among the documents that were provided to you with my letter reflected some choices that had to be made because the ICMA RC provides so many different options, we had to choose. And the pension committee recommended, in staff's support, certain provisions. Among those are the default investment. Should an employee not choose where they wanted to invest the funds, that they would, rather than just sitting without being invested, that they would be invested in a target retirement date at age 50, at age 60. We picked that because general fund employees' normal retirement date is 65, but the city has so many police and fire employees who are entitled to retire at age 55. We picked 60, and we picked the target retirement because that is a balance of fixed inequities. We also said that we did not want to create an option for loans to be made from this because it should be set aside for retirement purposes. And we made certain other options. Among them, as you'll see, and I'll switch now to talking about my letter and the attachments with it and the resolutions. The first resolution deals with establishing the 401 plan. That's actually under the IRS system, 401A plan. People in private business have 401Ks. Government plans are 401As. Attached to the letter, sorry, attached to the first resolution, 10R21, is the actual instrument creating the 401 plan. It is a complex legal document, but because of its significance, we wanted you to see all of it. As well as the attachment B was the trust, because these funds are held in trust for the employee. They cannot be used by the city for any purpose. You know, they are for the employee's benefit only. So it's a declaration of trust in that regard. This resolution calls for, in addition to adopting the 401 plan and the trust document, it sets the city manager, who serves, as you all know, as the chair of the pension committee in addition to being the city manager, with administrative responsibility to execute various documents relating to the retirement plan and the 401A component of the plan, and the human resources director, Glenn Godwin, to serve as the coordinator, the person receiving information and sending information, making sure that the data and the money are all correct. The most important document perhaps relating, in terms of a practical sense, is the adoption agreement. Now, that was also attached to my letter, and it was that one which shows some of the choices that we made. If you will look, that's the one that is headed return booklet. And following that is, is the adoption agreement. And so it shows you that, for example, we picked the 12-month period beginning July 1st, 2010, which identifies which employees are covered, the eligibility period, the percentage of contributions that we will allow rollover contributions. If someone comes to the city and they have a retirement program at their current employer, they can roll those funds over into the 401A. So I would be pleased to answer questions about any of the choices that the adoption agreement contains. In addition to that first resolution, we have also attached the administrative services agreement. That's basically the contract between the city and ICMA RC, which is saying they're going to be administering and managing this program, what the city is promising to do and what ICMA RC is promising to do. So with this first resolution, Resolution 10R21, you are making a number of important decisions. You're deciding you're going to have a 401A plan, that you're going to contract with ICMA RC to run the plan and what the terms of that contract are. You're going to elect certain options in your 401A plan design, and you're going to have the city manager and the human resources director perform certain functions with regard to that 401A plan. Before I talk about the other two resolutions and what they do, I'd like to pause and see if there are questions about Resolution 10R21 and the 401A plan.
Any questions from Ms. McGann regarding this resolution? Let me ask you, the city is intending to pay the full cost of administration of the plan. The employees will not be charged a fee, or will they?
They will be. They'll be charged 55 basis points. That's slightly more than half of 1% would be the administrative fee.
Per employee?
Yes. It's based on the funds that they have in their account. In addition, one of the things that the pension committee liked about the program that ICMA RC offered was that it has a lot of general education information that is available to employees so they can make choices. But if they want in addition some individualized, customized investment advice, they can choose to participate in a program which add a slight additional cost. I believe it was 65 basis points. They can choose to have personalized investment advice if they, but it didn't make, it didn't put that cost on each employee. It made that a choice of each employee. The cost of ICMA RC was less than the cost of the other very excellent submittals that we had. So this was a, a low cost, and it gave employees options if they wanted additional services.
And is it yearly cost?
Yes, yes.
It would be collected quarterly, or would be collected yearly?
I frankly don't remember that, Mayor.
That's fine.
Okay.
Can you just answer that question for me at a later time?
Yes, sir.
If you would. So an employee that had $10,000 in the account would pay $55 a year out of, which would be automatically deducted from their account.
Right. Which would, you know, the city would have put in at least 3% and arguably more of that. So, you know, the city would be supporting the cost in that way.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I just will just kind of say a couple of comments. The pension committee interviewed several firms with an RFP, and this firm was really a great firm. All of them are great firms, but this one kind of stood out. And I think we realize that a lot of our employees do not have the expertise of choosing how they want to invest their money. And that was an option that we talked about. They can, they can actually choose to either certain risk levels, if you will, to invest their money in, or they can have, as they mentioned earlier, they can pay a little more, they can be a little bit more involved in the decision-making process of their money. So that, that kind of gives some of our employees, if they want to just to turn it over to this company and say, "I choose to be a high-risk, or medium-risk, or a low-risk," depending on where they are in their career, they can do that. And those who want to choose to have a little bit more input on the decision-making process, they can do that as well. Does that sound correct?
Yes, sir, it does. One of the things that was attractive, in addition to the target retirement date funds, they also had funds that were set up based on the level of risk that an individual wanted. So we're not saying to employees, "They need to choose between all these funds," and, you know, spend a lot of time researching, that there was a relatively straightforward, simple option they had, either based on their expected retirement date or how much risk they wanted to take. And if they wanted more individualized investment advice, it was available to them at a very reasonable cost.
I may be wrong. I've been in a 401K, and the company had the kindness, I guess, to pay those fees on a yearly basis. They didn't guarantee they would pay them in perpetuity, but they, each year, they made a decision as to whether to pay those fees on the plan. It's not an expensive proposition. And I just wonder if the council would consider that the city might pay that per-person fee because I'm not sure that in our current pension plan, that any of the employees are paying any of the fees associated with the management of their pension funds. You see, if you, if you see what I'm saying.
A follow-
And I don't mean to guarantee it. It's kind of like the pay-as-you-go on our healthcare benefits for our retirees.
There wouldn't be a cost for the 457 component, which is the employee's voluntary choice as their, I'm not gonna-
And that's, that's an excellent distinction. And that's, but I still just suggest that initially that we, and it's not going to be a great deal of money, and that's, that's just a suggestion.
At this point, it's zero until we have you hired.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if you have $10,000 in the plan the first year, you know, the city's going to pay $55. That means it's not a high cost. And I don't, and I don't mean to hold this up based on that.
I, I'm concerned it might. And, but we can certainly-
Can we, can we, can we get back? Can we go ahead and go forward with this and then come back with some pension committee recommendations?
It's fine with me. I just don't think it's a significant expense, and I-
It is not. But I just want to make sure that we look at the long range, the long-term.
Sure.
Yeah. And one of the charges that staff and the committee thought they had from the council was to get a fixed, you know, capped percentage, and, and this would have the possibility of unsettling that.
So the fee is based only on what the city puts in, not on what the employee puts in? Is that correct?
No. If you'll turn to page five of the administrative services agreement-
I knew you would know where to look. I knew you would.
Well, thank you for that confidence. I-
I knew you would.
Mr. Godwin unfortunately could not be with us tonight, and he's been working closely on this as well. But if you look at- But if you look at Section 6A, it's, you know, the per annum of the amount of plan assets invested in the trust computed based on average daily net plan assets.
So it does distinct between who gives what?
It, it does not. And because, you know, this was an element of the submittals that was looked at when the Pension Committee was choosing among providers, it wasn't something that staff has frankly considered or negotiated since the committee made that choice. And it was based, that was part of their RFP, and which the committee considered and which the council, you know, previously blessed that selection. So I think we can, we can certainly ask...
I withdraw my suggestion.
I just don't, I just don't know how the bookkeeping would work, Mayor. I'm sorry, I just don't know.
I withdraw my suggestion. But, so then there will be fifteen basis points charged against the contribution of the employee and fifty-five basis points?
No, I, I think the fifteen percent relates to, if there's money...
It's .15 percent, not fifteen.
.15, sorry. Yeah, fifteen percent of one percent would be if, if you're outside the trust, you have the, if you have the ability to invest in things that aren't part of the vantage trust funds, there is an additional charge for that.
If you go outside?
If you go outside, yes, sir. But what I know is reflected in Section 6A.
All right, so, so we do have, we have the trust.
Yes, that is...
And we have the 401A, and then we have a trust. They're two different.
The, the trust is the parent agreement with ICMA RC. Both the 401A and the 457 are under the same trust. The trust is basically saying this is being created as, as the umbrella for everything, but they're distinct sections of the Internal Revenue Code, distinct plans, and you've got the two different plan documents. Because we are adopting the trust with the 401A document, we don't need to adopt it again with the 457. Once we've adopted the trust once, we're good. But, so what this first resolution does is say, we want to have a trust with ICMA RC, we want to have a contract with ICMA RC, we want to have a 401A plan, we want the 401A plan to do these things, and we want Rob and Glenn to do the things with the 401A plan. And among the things that will be done are the service agreements that were attached. So this one resolution has a lot of consequences, but there wasn't a way to really easily break it out because the pieces fit together.
All right, any other questions regarding, I guess, this first resolution, the 10R21? Any other questions? Then I would presume that Ms. McGannon and the city manager are suggesting that we adopt this resolution and whether there be a motion to do so.
May I also move?
All right, you have a motion and second to adopt a resolution regarding establishment of a governmental money purchase 401 plan for city employees hired on or after July 1, 2010. Are there any questions regarding that resolution? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
So at this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution regarding the establishment of a deferred compensation 457 plan for city employees hired on or after July 1, 2010.
Mayor, excuse me, but Mr. Washington, was that an affirmative or negative?
Yeah.
It was affirmative.
It was a vote.
All right. Resolution 10R22 does similar things for the 457 plan. The 457 plan is the deferred compensation plan where the employee would make the voluntary contributions of between one to five percent of earnings. The Administrative Services Agreement with ICMA RC is a separate agreement, but it would, has the same, it's very similar. You would be, by adopting the resolution, saying, if you, if you look at that, again, it's all in trust, it's only for the employees, no other purpose, that there would not be loans, that the Human Resources Director would be the coordinator, and the city manager would be able to execute necessary agreements for administration of the plan. This one didn't have as many choices, it wasn't as complex, so to speak, as the 401A plan structure. And, you know, the deferred compensation plan is something that existing city employees have in addition to the pension plan. Those two would not be merged, they'll stay separate, but it is comparable as a 457 plan. And so the Pension Committee and staff recommend that you adopt this resolution to create a deferred compensation 457 plan for newly hired city employees.
All right, any questions for Ms. McGannon regarding this resolution, which would establish a deferred compensation 457 plan, a contract with ICMA RC, options on the plan design, and naming the personnel director the coordinator and the city manager the administrator?
Move to adopt the resolution.
You have a motion and second. Any questions on the resolution? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Now, we'll consider for adoption a resolution regarding amendment of the defined contribution retirement plan.
Mayor Bragg, one of the things that was frankly a surprise to me, considering how much ICMA RC does of this, is that they didn't have a standard provision in those lengthy documents that you received and reviewed, something linking the 401A and the 457 plan. And they indicated we would need to have an amendment. You know, amendment's perfectly possible, and we have prepared one. It is before you as an appendix to the resolution. And the point of this amendment is to make crystal clear that if an employee puts money into the 457 plan, that the city will use that contribution to decide how much money it's also going to put into the 401A plan in addition to the mandatory city contribution of three percent. So this amendment is what creates this necessary link between the two plans. In addition, because we wanted to ensure that the council's goal of making sure that the pension plan and the retirement plan were similar, it specifies the normal retirement age in the same way, which is found in Section 3, and it defines earnings in the same way as in Section 4. So this makes clear the city's definitions and creates this necessary bridge between the 401A contributions and the 457 contributions. It has been looked at in draft form by ICMA RC, and they have confirmed that it does what the Pension Committee and you have said you wanted to be done with regards to the relationship. And so we would recommend your adoption of this third resolution, Resolution 10R23.
All right, any questions for Ms. McGannon regarding this resolution regarding the amendment of the defined contribution retirement plan? If not, is there a motion to adopt this resolution? You have a motion and second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. McGannon.
Thank you.
Are there any beer permit applications, Ms. Wright?
Yes, Mayor, there are quite a few tonight. The first one I'm going to start with is one that just likes a fire inspection before they'll be approved by building and codes. It's a location at 2349 South Church Street. It, it's going to be like an event center. They're going to have weekend events, and that's where they intend to sell beer. The next one is a restaurant at 2805 Oldport Parkway, Suite N. It is a change of ownership. The next one is a restaurant at 2441 Oldport Parkway, Suite M. It is also a change of ownership. The next one is a convenience store at 5409 Northwest Broad Street. It is a change of ownership. And then I have three that are all convenience stores. They're a change of ownership and a slight name change. One at 1849 East Northfield Boulevard, one at 2020 South Church Street, and one at 1849 East, oh, I've got two on here the same. Why they should be on, somehow something got crossed on our copies. I don't have that one. No, I've got 501, 51. Okay, and the third one is at 1118 Mercury Boulevard. These three, the last three are all going to be owned by the same person. They're buying all three. And that's it for tonight. Those are all, except for the very first one, those have all met all of our requirements, and I recommend approval. And the first one, I recommend approval once they meet their fire building inspection.
All right, subject to that exception, is there a motion to accept the beer permits? You have a motion and second to accept the beer permits. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
You have before you a revised list of the statements to be considered for payment. Are there any questions regarding the bills to be paid, or is there a motion that we, in fact, pay the bills?
Move to pay the bills. Second.
Motion and second to pay the bills. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
There are no board or commission appointments that I am aware of currently. Other business from staff or the city council to come before the council, Mr. Kirchner?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I apologize for this coming at a late hour like this and not giving you opportunity to review this information, but we have a request for an emergency purchase of a pump at the Sinking Creek Waste Water Treatment Plant. We have five pumps in our main pump station, and we have a 500 horsepower pump that's been in service for 15 years, and it's basically at the end of its useful life. And during these recent rain events with the high volume of flow that's come through the plant, it, it's deteriorated and had a major failure. We've been in the process of replacing pumps. We've replaced one last year, and we're going to go through a process of replacing these, but this has accelerated that. This is one of the major pumps that we have, and what we would like to do is to recommend with your approval that we, on an emergency purchase, sole-souls purpose, a 500 horsepower pump from Wemco Hydrostall Pump, per their quotation dated July 13, quotation number 127585, the total amount of $128,508. The reason this is, is considered an emergency is that the pump is out of service, there is a 16-week manufacturing requirement on this pump. It's just not something you take off the shelf. It's quite large. I'll, I'll stop and let, if you want to read the entire memo, but that in a nutshell is what, what we're looking at. And I have some pictures and of the thing and the quotation that, that we received.
Your quote number was 127584. It's 127584.
Okay, thank you. I'll give the council an opportunity to look through the documents that they've just been presented. Appears everything is in order.
The states, these are going to come from your operating funds?
It will come from my working capital reserve, yes, sir. Well, that's not operating, it's our capital reserve.
Is this the only one that's the 500 horsepower?
No, we have other 500 horsepower, but this is the one that is, that was damaged beyond repair, and we're going to replace. And, and in the meantime, we're going to put together documents to have the other pumps replaced.
Rebuilt or replaced?
Replaced.
All right. Any questions? Then is there a motion to accept this request for an emergency purchase?
Some will.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you.
Any other business? If there is no other business, then you are adjourned.